I'd like to call to order the regular meeting of the Fall River School Committee, April 13th, Cusps Middle School. Deb, please call the roll.
Mr. Agia?
Here.
Mr. Costa?
Here.
Mr. Har?
Here.
Mr. Hetzel?
Here.
Mr. Corey?
Here.
Ms. Larrabee?
Here.
Mayor Coogan?
Here. Salute to the flag.
The United States of America, we are one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Pursuant to the open meeting law, any person may make an audio or video recording of this public meeting, or may transmit the meeting through any medium. Attendees are therefore advised that such recordings or transmissions are being made, whether perceived or unperceived by those present, and are deemed to be acknowledged and permissible. Anybody signed up for citizens input? None. Here we go. Recognizations awards? None. Superintendent's report.
Thank you, Mayor Coogan. We are now in what we call Phase Two of remote learning. This phase is from April 7th through May 4th. We've distributed work across every single grade level, in all content areas, at all sites. That work is distributed. We still have a couple folks that we're actually going out to hand-deliver some things to. But that remote learning platform and process is a great testament to the goodwill and thoughtful skill of our educators, FREA, FRAA, our parents, everyone working together to develop that and support that through, again, May 4th. Now, if there is a time between now and May 4th that the closure is extended, we are prepared to reconvene and then begin the next phase of what that work would look like, given the guidance of the Commonwealth. At the present time, we met today, and we now are forming a smaller task force to do some work and come back to the committee on the topic of grading. So it is likely that I'll be asking or requesting some sort of special meeting prior to our next meeting, for us to talk about the issue of grading. Now, that's a grading policy, something that the school committee approves, and I feel I should bring forward to the committee, the direction that I'm suggesting we go down for grading, based, again, on guidance and some other things. Two, we're also preparing to think about, as we did this phase of the work, working with the state, I have two conference calls this week. We'll continue to learn about special education services that we're delivering and supporting, as well as second language learner supports. Again, we met about that today. Appreciate Mr. Loesch and his team for the work that they've done today. But our principals are working hard. Thank Ms. Ponce for coordinating and pulling all this together. But remote learning operations are up and operational in Fall River Public Schools, and I want to thank everyone for their work there. Two, the Durfee Construction Project is still underway, as we spoke last week. The carpenters and the glazer unions are not working right now, but the other labor and crafts unions are. We're continuing with all the work, both in the fieldhouse and in the core building. Today was an awful day in terms of weather, it still is, but we're almost done with the roof, and you can see the exterior brickwork commencing around the building. Positive news to come out of all this is our operations team has stepped up, cleaned over 200 million, over 2 million square feet of facility. We've distributed over 80,000 meals. We've provided supports to 10,200 families, as well as provided supports to families of other schools here in Fall River, working jointly with our chatters, our vocational and our parochial schools. We're continuing to work with the city to support the needs of kids in the City of Fall River during closure. I can't state strongly enough how great our people are, how talented they are, and the esprit de corps that they display. This is a challenging time for everybody. As we know, the future is up in the air in terms of, we don't know what to expect, but I do appreciate everyone communicating, staying calm, asking questions, working collaboratively. This week, we have several calls, both with the commissioner, superintendents, urban superintendents have another call, there's calls today with legal, and we also are staying connected through an email chain. But every district is really struggling with the lack of connectivity. It's hard for everybody, and we're trying to stay connected to all our kids, checking in, making sure that families have what they need. We'll continue to support families, and appreciate everyone in the City of Fall River. I can't state strongly enough how amazing our people are. At the end of the day, put this team up against any team in the country, we're going to win. So with that, answer any questions that anyone may have on the superintendent's report.
Mr. Coogan? Mr. Hart?
Mr. Mayor, thank you. Mr. Superintendent, with regards to the, you said, the competent labor unions, do we anticipate any other delays, or are there any delays with the construction of the building? Middle School?
Great question. So it's specifically the carpenters' union and the glaziers' union. Right now, both those crafts critically important to our work, but in terms of the major scope of the overall project, both the glaziers' and the carpenters', biggest push would be the second week of May, when the windows are set to go in. So, right now, you know, there's definitely some delays, some hiccups, but nothing major. But we'll have more information to share as we get closer to the windows being installed. I will say that we still have about 130 construction workers on site every single day. And I will also say that Suffolk Construction has really done an amazing job of turning the construction site into literally, it's like a Red Cross project in terms of safety. No one can get on the site without getting the temperatures checked. There's checkpoints that are, have sentry, manned by sentry points, that are doing temperature checks. Everyone's wearing PPE. They're cleaning all of the facilities, every single day, sanitizing, cleaning, and they're using social distancing practices in the construction. I'm really impressed with what I've seen. It's a safe, clean operation, and I look forward to continuing to move. Concurrent with the build-out right now is also the fieldhouse retrofit. So we're in a really good place with the fitness center, the wellness of the health classrooms, the locker room areas, the pool. The pool is starting to be constructed, and just on Friday or Saturday, just on Saturday, I believe, the steel was erected for the, what we call the land bridge, connecting the two facilities. So you really get a sense of the overall scope if you take a walk or drive by that area.
Mr. Costa?
That's good, and I'm just, so, we're not anticipating any delays in the near future on the road with regards to the governor making any other announcements as far as teaching, construction, or having stuff, constructions stopping, anything serious like that, you're not looking at that as a possibility?
Everything's possible. One thing we learned through this crisis is that you can't predict the future. So, all I can say to you right now is that we're all speed-moving ahead, but I mean, things can change in a minute notice. I don't, I don't, I don't see that at this moment, but I'm not going to say to you that there won't be more disruption, there will be, and we'll deal with it as the time comes. I think we've got a great team in place, communicating every single day, and I'll, of course, inform the committee first time I hear anything.
Yeah, no, I think, I think it's going, it's going very good. We've got, I, I think the weather's been great, and I think we're pretty much ahead of the, ahead of schedule on it. I'm just trying to get, you know, maybe just to make sure that there's not going to be any major interruptions, and from what you're telling me, you're not, you're not seeing that down the road, but obviously, this is, you know, uncharted waters that we're in, but I'm confident with your answer, so I appreciate it. Thank you, I yield.
Mr. Costa?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Mr. Superintendent, if you can, you know, I know that there's been some confusion as to what remote learning looks like as opposed to being interpreted as online learning. And we don't have an online learning platform, but however, I think some teachers are supplementing some of the stuff that they're sending their students in addition to packets, or maybe in conjunction with the packets. So I think there's some confusion amongst parents that some students are getting requests by teachers to participate in Google platforms, and other platforms, through the internet and by way of computer, and that's not acceptable to all of our students. And so I forwarded the email to you of a parent who was concerned that he has a couple of young children, their teacher with other students sent out something through Google, I believe, Google Classroom, and he was inquiring as to whether or not the district had the capacity to put laptops in each of the students' hands. So, if we can send out something to parents this week, I know we're inundating them with information, but to clarify online learning as opposed to remote learning, and what that looks like, and what the requirements or the expectations are going to be for our students, and that packet were available, and that's really what we're going to be looking at when students come back to school, and not anything that was required or supplemented online.
Right, so, great question. Yeah, we'll definitely send something else, again. We did clarify that in one of the memos earlier, but we'll do that again, your point's well taken. You're right, so, remote learning is learning from home. Online learning is actually a continuation of a curriculum online. The state is, is very adamant that there is no, to be no online learning at this time, that everyone needs to focus on deepening all the skills up until the point that school closed, because there's an equity issue. We are using a remote learning platform, so there is, there are materials online, but we also printed them out. I know there are some folks that are doing Google Classrooms and stuff to check in, and that's all enrichment activities, if you will. I do know that all that will be collected when it does come time, when it does come time for some sort of grade, will be what we required in the remote learning packets and the remote learning platform. Tonight, we are going to discuss policies that I'm proposing for one-to-one devices that would allow us to do more online learning. Mr. Costa, where, what, if, if, if there is continued closure, you know, let's say a week from now, two weeks from now, we start talking about, oh, we're not opening on May 4th, we're going to open on June 4th, or we're not going to open at all, or whatever the scenario is, one of the things that I'm, want us to really make sure that we're prepared for is the possibility of that, particularly, let's say, at the secondary level, at the high school level. If we did go one-to-one for every kid that needed a device, and we went to an online model, which, which is not out of the realm of possibility at some point, would we have the ability to do that? In terms of resources and devices, we would be able to do that at the secondary level. Granted, each school has a cadre of devices, they don't have enough for every single kid yet, but the goal, remember, long-term, was that next year, we roll out one-to-one at the middle level for all kids in the middle schools, and that, as we get better each year, we get essentially to a place where, where one-to-one devices, grade six through 12, in the Fall River Public Schools. I think that's going to happen in the next two years, but I, you're, I'll get something out to parents, I understand the issue of equity access, but there's another issue here that people have to understand. It's not so much the ability of having a device, it's the connectivity of a device. So, if I gave you a tool, a Chromebook, but you don't have internet access from your house, how do you get internet access? Well, you could go to Starbucks, but Starbucks is closed now. So how do you get internet access? That is the real issue of equity, is that we don't yet have a methodology to provide online access to every family that doesn't currently have online access.
I mean, I don't necessarily have the answer for, for how people connect. I know Comcast, City has expanded their internet service, even if you don't have the premium package, I guess if you will, they are allowing for a slower level internet connection for customers, I believe, if I understood the commercial correctly, because of the times we're in. The only issue I have is that if we have students in one classroom whose teachers are sending out information, whether it's enrichment or not, and some students can access it and some students can't, I just think, if you're one of those parents who can't, it raises those concerns that, is my son or daughter missing out on something that other classmates are learning? And so, we just keep that in mind. I applaud teachers for creativity, I applaud them for using online platforms in hopes that it reaches some of our students, but if we can just be cognizant that there are some out there who don't have that ability, not only through the means to access it, but also the connection for it. And so, if we can look to, as time goes on, you know, build some contingency where we can roll that out amongst middle and high school, I think it puts us in a better place. But, if we can just be cognizant of that right now, and remind parents that this son or daughter is not going to be penalized in any way for not participating in those options that are out there, and that it would be certainly the packets we'd be looking at. With that, I yield, and thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman?
Mr. Corey?
If I may, to Dr. Malone, what's the word on MCAS, Dr. Malone?
So, the word right now is that we're not talking about MCAS assessment this year. The bill that was passed last week allows the commissioner to waive it. There's been no word. I'm assuming that there, I mean, we're not even talking testing right now. So I'm not going to say to you that, that all the tests have been canceled. What I am saying is that the bill allows the commissioner to cancel all assessments, and there's been no further talk. I know we have a conversation with the commissioner tomorrow, but no one right now is talking about MCAS. I will also say that the bill allows for, at the high school level, for those students who are seniors and who have met all local graduation requirements, and have yet to pass the MCAS, that we'll be able to waive that as a competency determination, and allow those kids to graduate with an actual diploma, which is a very positive thing, I think, to come out of this crisis. So, we'll have more information to share. Let's just make the assumption that, as of right now, we're, we're moving forward, not thinking about the MCAS, we're not talking about it, but we will be prepared, whatever the state says, but I don't anticipate there going to be some sort of mandate for assessment this year.
If I may, just one more question, Dr. Malone, if you're going to have a conversation with the commissioner, then is he entertaining points of view from different school districts or, or school committee bodies in regard to MCAS?
Yeah, man, I think the point's been made loud and clear to him that we shouldn't have assessments this year. So, the commissioner's a very practical person, and I think that he understands the gravitas of, of the issue, and I think I'll have more information, as soon as I hear more information, I'll share it with the committee. We are going to be doing, though, the, the online advanced placement testing, which is from the College Board, and that will be at some point in, in May, for those students who signed up for AP classes. That will be done online, and there, we're going to be able to cover that and, and make that equitable for everyone as well. But in terms of the state assessments, there's been no talk. And the other thing about accountability, you know, what does that, what does that mean for accountability? We don't have any guidance or direction right now. I think, you know, the best, the common sense approach is to hold everyone harmless for another year, and figure out the following year, what the results look like.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, with that, I yield.
Anything further? Okay. Student comment, student delegate report, not tonight. I have a series of minutes that need approval.
Motion to approve minutes?
Motion to approve?
That's fine.
Second.
We just have to take them individually, guys. I'm looking for a motion to approve 21020.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Any discussion? Roll call, Deb, please.
Mr. Agia?
Yes.
Mr. Costa?
Yes.
Mr. Har?
Yes.
Mr. Hetzel?
Yes.
Mr. Corey?
Yes.
Ms. Larrabee?
Yes.
Mayor Coogan?
Yes, I'm looking to approve 224 Finance Committee Meeting Minutes.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion, roll call, Deb, please.
Would you approve that, Mr. Coogan? I'm sorry.
224-
The next one. Number four?
22420 Finance Committee Meeting. This is the roll call.
Mr. Agia?
Yes.
Mr. Costa?
Yes.
Mr. Har?
Yes.
Mr. Hetzel?
Yes.
Mr. Corey?
Yes.
Ms. Larrabee?
Yes.
Mayor Coogan?
Yes, I'm looking-
Mayor Coogan?
Yep.
Mayor Coogan, was that number four?
No, it's, I'm doing them by date, Paul. That was 224. The next one is 3920 Finance Committee-
I'm sorry.
Okay.
I'm sorry, go ahead, I'm sorry.
3920 Finance Committee Meeting, looking for a motion?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Discussion, roll call, Deb, please.
Mr. Agia?
Yes.
Mr. Costa?
Yes.
Mr. Har?
Yes.
Mr. Hetzel?
Yes.
Mr. Corey?
Yes.
Ms. Larrabee?
Yes.
Mayor Coogan?
Yes, looking to approve 3920 Regular Meeting of the School Committee Minutes.
Motion to approve?
Second.
Discussion, roll call, Deb, please.
Mr. Agia?
Yes.
Mr. Costa?
Yes.
Mr. Har?
Yes.
Mr. Hetzel?
Yes.
Mr. Corey?
Yes.
Ms. Larrabee?
Yes.
Mayor Coogan?
Yes, looking to approve 31120 Finance Committee Meeting Minutes.
Motion to approve?
Second.
Discussion, roll call, Deb, please.
Mr. Agia?
Yes.
Mr. Costa?
Yes.
Mr. Har?
Yes.
Mr. Hetzel?
Yes.
Mr. Corey?
Yes.
Ms. Larrabee?
Yes.
Mayor Coogan?
Yes, and finally-
And motion to approve 317.
31720 Emergency Meeting of the School Committee. Roll call, Deb, please, on 317.
Mr. Agia?
Yes.
Mr. Costa?
Yes.
Mr. Hetzel? Mr. Har?
Yes.
Mr. Hetzel?
Yes.
Mr. Corey?
Yes.
Ms. Larrabee?
Yes.
Mayor Coogan?
Yes, we have one travel request from-
Motion to approve travel requests?
Second.
Any discussion on the travel? Roll call, Deb, please.
I have a question, Mr. Chair.
Go ahead, Tom, I can't wait.
I, I approve the travel, I'm just concerned about the probability of it. Is there, is this a definite travel, or is it probable based on?
Tom, they're all, they're all, they're all wait-and-see. We're doing it so that it's an out-of-state trip, and it's in the queue if we can go.
Yeah, this is for adults, it's not kids, but it's, since it's to the town right below us, when it crosses the state line, we've got to bring it to the school committee.
Yeah. They're only going to go if it's safe, Tom.
With that, I yield.
Any further discussion? Roll call, Deb, please.
Mr. Agia?
Yes.
Mr. Costa?
Yes.
Mr. Har?
Yes.
Mr. Hetzel?
Yes.
Mr. Corey?
Yes.
Ms. Larrabee?
Yes.
Mayor Coogan?
Yes, we also have a donation tonight.
Motion to approve donations? Second.
For Tansy Middle School. Roll call, Deb.
Mr. Agia?
Yes.
Mr. Costa?
Yes.
Mr. Har?
Yes.
Mr. Hetzel?
Yes.
Mr. Corey?
Yes.
Ms. Larrabee?
Yes.
Mayor Coogan?
Yes, number 10 is, we also have an approval of a contract, there's actually a couple there-
Motion to approve contracts?
Second.
Any discussion on contracts, guys?
Question.
Mr. Agia?
Just, is this if a service is already rendered? It's not new, like, it's not something that just happened, I'm assuming?
Right, these are, right.
This was already in existence, right?
Yes.
Yeah, with that, I yield.
Any further discussion on contracts? Roll call, Deb, please.
Mr. Agia?
Yes.
Mr. Costa?
Yes.
Mr. Har?
Yes.
Mr. Hetzel?
Yes.
Mr. Corey?
Yes.
Ms. Larrabee?
Yes.
Mayor Coogan?
Yes, item number 11, approval of grants.
Motion to approve grants?
Second.
Any discussion on grants? Kevin?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, I have a question.
Okay, just hang on one second, please, Mr. Corey. Mr. Agia?
My question on this is just, obviously, we want to accept the grant, but when I read it, it kind of binds the school district to doing a whole bunch of things, related to walking school bus, and paying grants, and all that stuff that is more than what's here, so I'm assuming we're going to get something to, to be more realistic with it.
Yeah, that's my assumption as well, that they're all connected. Now, we were invited to apply for this from all the other good work we're doing, so we did, and it's going to all tie in with a lot of the stuff that you just mentioned.
Yeah, if I could just ask, request some info, that we keep talking about the walking school bus as a, you know, a positive and all that, but we've never actually gotten data on the walking school bus, like, for instance, who shows up, how much, which kids are actually participating, which, is it kids that come to school anyway, is it kids that have had chronic absenteeism? Just any kind of info that you could send us related to that, because now this looks like it's going to expand to all the schools, so I just want to get that, with that, I yield, thank you.
No problem. Any further discussion?
I have, yes, Mr. Chairman.
Oh, Mr. Corey, go ahead, I'm sorry.
Okay, so in regard to this grant, I know that Dr. Dogan is not here, I'm fairly excited to see this grant, because it's speaking about the right things. I may comment on the walking school bus, but I'm not sure about the data, if any, has been completed, but I do know that the overall effects of the walking school bus have been very effective, as far as school climate is concerned, as far as bonding, friendships, social emotional wellness, on many levels, the walking school bus has been a great success. To replicate it is a great idea, but it's a sensitive issue, and it needs to be replicated properly, it can't be lip service. It, it needs to be with oversight and proper follow-through, in order for it to be effective, and will enhance student attendance ratios greatly, I believe. The second part of that grant is healthy eating, on the obesity side. In my time supervising cafeterias at the elementary level, I have served a great weight of vegetables to kids just on oriental eating vegetables, and we need to ensure that parents are with us on this, to get the message to their kids, that we're going to provide nutritious food for them, their responsibility is to consume it. That's all I have to say, thank you, with that, I yield.
Any further discussion? Roll call, Deb.
Mr. Agia?
Yes.
Mr. Costa? Mr. Costa?
Yes.
Mr. Har?
Yes.
Mr. Hetzel?
Yes.
Mr. Corey?
Yes.
Ms. Larrabee?
Yes.
Mayor Coogan?
Yes, Committee of the Whole, first item, second read and vote to approve the 2021 school year instructional calendar, as presented by Dr. Matthew Malone.
Motion to approve?
Second.
Second.
Any discussion on the calendar? Roll call, Deb.
Mr. Agia?
Yes.
Mr. Costa?
Yes.
Mr. Har?
Yes.
Mr. Hetzel?
Yes.
Mr. Corey?
Yes.
Ms. Larrabee?
Yes.
Mayor Coogan?
Yes, item number two, discussion and vote to approve to hire a district plumber, as referred by the Finance Committee and presented by Ken Pacico, Chief Operating Officer.
So moved.[1797.30] Second.
Any?
On the second?
Any discussion on this item? Mr. Hart?
Yeah, on the second. Uh, m- m- Mr. Superintendent, have, I see the job description, it looks fine, have we, uh, started the interview process for this?
No. It's gotta be approved.
I'm gonna have Ken speak to that, but, uh, our usual process is, is, uh, we don't, we don't do that till the school committee approves.
Yep.
Mr. Hart, the, um, the position after this evening will be, um, will be posted and hopefully, um, before, uh, the end of the fiscal year be hired.
But, that's fine, that's all I need is to know, Mr. Pacheco, I appreciate it, but also too, um, Mr. Superintendent, have we, um, I know in the last, um, meeting we had at CUS, I know that, um, Vice Chair Costa brought up the, uh, strength and conditioning coach. Have we developed that, um, uh, uh, job description yet and is it coming to us soon?
It's coming in May. Uh, we'll have it then at the next school committee meeting.
Okay, that's all I need to know, that's used to me.
Anything further? Roll, uh, roll call, Deb.
Mr. Agia?
Yes.
Mr. Costa?
Yes.
Mr. Har?
Yes.
Mr. Hetza?
Yes.
Mr. Corey?
Yes.
Ms. Lareve?
Yes.
Mayor Coogan?
Yes. Discussion item number three is a discussion and vote to approve the SMEC Articles of Agreement with Fall River as a member.
Motion to approve?
Second.
Um, by Michael Loesch, Assistant Superintendent, sped, any discussion on this item? Mr. Hetzler?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I was just curious, I noticed we have to appoint a member of this body to that body and they would represent Fall River. So I'm just curious, do we have someone in mind already? Is this, this is an additional duty for some, one member of this school committee? So I'm just curious how that's going out.
I thought we, I thought we had someone.
Well, we have someone in mind, but this committee has to appoint them.
Okay.
Yes, that is correct, we do have to have, uh, one school committee member. Um, I think the person we did have in mind, uh, was Mr. Corey. Uh, he had noted pre- previous interest in this for one of, uh, the other potential partnerships we were looking at, um, and, you know, I definitely, uh, I think they appreciate having him as a member there, being an educator and a parent.
Excellent, thank you, I yield.
Motion to appoint Mr. Corey as our delegate.
Second.
All right, so we have two motions. First, to approve the agreement.
Chairman, just, I'll amend the motion if there's one on the floor then, just to amend it to include Mr. Corey as our delegate.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Yep, sec.
Okay, so as amended, uh, the motion to, uh, Mr. Agia, sorry.
So I recall, maybe I'm wrong, but, that we were gonna do something like that and then we came to a meeting and we pulled it for the other, for the South Coast. I don't know that that's ever come back up again, and what was the rationale for pulling it? I thought it was because, I thought it was around whether a school committee member, usually a superintendent, so if it got pulled, what's the story? Yep, so, uh, basically, that was for South Coast. Uh, we originally thought that was going to be, uh, an opportunity for one, to have one of our committee members be a part of them. Uh, I believe they had changed their bylaws, so it says that only, um, basically, the superintendent can represent the district on their board. Um, at, we weren't really in agreement with that piece. Um, SMEC, their entire, uh, commit, their, their entire board is built of school committee members. Um, that is the only folks that their board is composed of, um, and Mr. Corey, you know, said he was also willing to participate in that one. So wh- where are we at with the other one? Uh, the other one, we're, we're preserving our relationship, we still, uh, you know, have a, a good amount of students placed there, we, we do utilize them for PD at times as well, they've got an excellent staff there, uh, but we're just really continuing on as previously, as business as usual. I mean, that just begs a different question, quite frankly, then, you know, we were told at the time, let's join this other South Coast, we got more kids at South Coast than we do at this one. We also were told at that microphone by multiple people, we were gonna save money, it was a valid thing. I'm glad this came up now because now I find out this is, I guess we just abandoned that vote, that we voted to do it, so like, not trying to argue with anybody, but it just becomes, uh, so if it's advantageous to be there, we should just be a member of it.
You, you don't understand the process with SMEC, I mean, with, uh, South Coast. Uh, too rigorous, we had a deal on the table, the deal wasn't approved, so we're not joining them. Uh, we do have a relationship with them, we do great work with them, they do PD with stuff, we got kids in their thing, this is a membership organization that makes sense for us with the SMEC, so we, when I got here, we were not members of no collaborators, now we'll be a member of at least one, uh, which is a good step for us. Uh, South Coast will maintain the relationship moving forward.
Right, I think you understand my point of not necessarily this being the forum to get that other information, it was, it's a surprise, but the, um, if you could just say, what is, maybe you can use that one. I'm just gonna ask him a question, it makes more sense to go over there. I read through it, but what is the, um, obviously, there's some benefit, otherwise you guys wouldn't be recommending it, but what is the, is there a financial benefit to us joining SMEC? Do we have a lot of students there, what's this, just general quick? Uh, we don't, right now, we have about six students in their programs, uh, but one of the main benefits that SMEC has really noted to us is they want to have programs within our schools, uh, which means we could have multiple benefits into it and that we'd have reduced tuition, they would also need to pay us rent for the classrooms, which is broken down in their agreements, uh, and in addition, we'll save on transportation as well, so we, we won't have to be sending kids out of the city, um, in order to have them educated. Um, SMEC also does transportation at cost for all of their programs, um, so there's definitely multiple benefits, especially on the financial side, um, and they have a strong commitment that they want to build programs within our schools, um, which is, you know, even better than just being a part of it, because then we get to keep, keep kids within the city and have them educated within Fall River. Yeah, and do they service the same, uh, population as South Coast? Yes, yep, all, all the same populations, um, you know, their programs look a little bit different than what they currently have, but they, they service all the same groups. So they're somewhat in competition? Yep. I would, that I yield, thank you.
Anything further? Roll call, Deb, please.
Mr. Agia?
Yes.
Mr. Costa?
Yes.
Mr. Har?
Yes.
Mr. Hetza?
Yes.
Mr. Corey?
Yes.
Ms. Lareve?
Yes.
Mayor Coogan?
Yes, that was item number three, as amended, including Mr. Corey. Discussion item number four, to explore options for signatures to bill schedules as presented by Kevin Almeida, uh, Chief Financial.
Motion to approve number four? Second.
With the, with the comment?
We have a motion and a second.
I'd like to refer it.
One of the, Mr. Chairman, solicit as discussion only.
I'm sorry, Mr. Costa, I didn't hear.
Said the agenda says discussion.
It's a discussion, I'm not sure it needs action.
Okay.
No action.
There is no action on this, so we're just gonna let Mr. Almeida explain it to us in the thought.
Uh, so, so currently, our process is, we, we have a requirement, a policy that states that a majority of the school committee is required to sign off on all of our batches, uh, with the exception of the utility bills. So currently, we get four signatures on our regular batches and two signatures on our utility bills. The MMA in two, in August of two thousand and sixteen passed a, a policy in order to, uh, or passed into law, uh, a requirement for signatures on, on, on bill schedules warrants that says essentially, the school committee has the authority to assign one signer, um, of the schedules and, um, to make, to make the bill paying process more efficient. And so, uh, with everything going on with this COVID nineteen pandemic, I thought, uh, we thought we would try to make things a little bit more efficient and we're bringing forward an option to potentially bring the number of signatures down from four to two for all schedules.
Any discussion, Mr. Hart?
Yeah, just real quickly, I, I proposed this last meeting, um, just to, just because the, the circumstances that we were in, I thought it'd make it a lot, a little bit easier. Um, if it's not possible to do it, as we said, like, uh, the superintendent talked about something online, um, but I, I've read all the, uh, policies attached to this, and I'm fine with, I mean, if, if, if Kevin's satisfied, if you guys are satisfied with it from four signatures to two, that's fine with me, I just wanted to make it easier, uh, on your end of it, that's all. Thank you.
Any further, uh, Mr. Costa?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and I'll be brief, I, I spoke with the superintendent, I think I spoke with you briefly about this. I, I wasn't aware of the new change, uh, in the statute, I think it was two thousand and eight, maybe it was two thousand and seven, when then Mayor Bob Correa was in office, he had, uh, put together a, a group of individuals from the school committee, uh, excuse me, from the school comment, the city side, I sat on that. We went through step by step the process, it's a lengthy one, doesn't lend to our vendors getting paid timely, however, at the time, that's what the statute and I believe some of the city ordinances or charter had required, so we were able to reduce the number of utility and telephone from four to two. The new guidance from twenty fifteen is that we can go to two, then, then certainly I think it makes sense for us as a school committee to do that, so that we're processing the bill schedules in a more timely fashion, so that our vendors get paid more timely. So I, I'm not opposed to going from four to two, if it becomes a need where it's a vote that's required, we certainly could do it at that point, I would just ask that, you know, um, those two members, whoever they are, um, that they be constant, I don't know if it requires just two or if it requires the same two. I'm not sure if that needs to be the same or, or if it can just vary amongst two members, but any of that, I just think for continuity purposes and accountability, that if we're gonna reduce it, then, uh, it remain those same two individuals and with that, I yield.
Any further discussion?
I'd like to make a motion that we, uh, refer this to the policy committee to get some of those specific answers.
Second.
Any further discussion?
On that, just quickly, I really don't have a problem with adjusting it, but the purpose of us signing is fiduciary responsibility of school committee members. So currently, we have people in positions that are very supportive, transparent with what's happening. I've been on this board in the past where that wasn't the case, where it's very important that the school committee members all take a look at some of this stuff. So I'd like to ask that, when it goes to policy, if they can look at some way of giving us some sort of monthly report of what vendors are paid, whatever's easier, the point is to make it easier. I trust you guys, I think you're doing a good job with transparency, but I also don't want to give away all of our authority and then something changes and then we can't really get it back, so, uh, I hope it gets referred and it gets worked out there. Thank you, I yield.
Do I have a second on Kevin's motion to refer it to the policy subcommittee? We do, roll call, please.
Mr. Agia?
Yes.
Mr. Costa?
Yes.
Mr. Har?
Yes.
Mr. Hetza?
Yes.
Mr. Corey?
Yes.
Ms. Lareve?
Yes.
Mayor Coogan?
Item number five, discussion and vote to approve payment to vendors as presented by Dr. Malone, Superintendent.
Motion made.
Any discussion? Mr. Hetzler?
I mean, unless the superintendent wants to give us a brief.
Well, I, what I was gonna bring up and, um, suggest to the committee was, um, what we're looking to do and what we've been given advice on, uh, is how to deal with vendors now, uh, for payment for services that not, aren't necessarily being delivered because of the, uh, coronavirus crisis. So, for example, we have bills to pay, uh, and we haven't paid, uh, many of these bills as we try to figure out which direction that we want to go down. Uh, I'll give you some examples, special ed placements are still providing services to kids because the students are students in their schools, so those are payments that we would pay. But, things like transportation, uh, there are no transportation services. Do we continue to pay those bills or do we negotiate, which is what we've been, uh, recommended to do, uh, by the state, uh, to some sort of, uh, agreement that makes sense for, uh, for both parties? What I'd like to do is, is go back and, uh, and do that process, uh, and come up with a win, uh, win for, uh, both sides, if you will, as to how we, uh, pay our commitments, but at the same time, save the city money.
Right, so, in regards to the bus and the transportation contracts, I understand they have bills to pay, they have to pay the vehicle payments, right, they're gonna pay their insurances, so we're looking at continuity, right? Our concern is that when this pandemic's over and we get back to school, that the bus companies are still in position to provide transportation to us. So I understand that, and I wanna, I mean, my opinion is to approve this and give you the authority to negotiate. I'm just curious, when you negotiate, are you gonna come back before this committee and have us approve what you negotiate, or do you want, do you want to leave here tonight with a set window, a figure that you would negotiate upon, that we would approve?
Um, great question, uh, I, I, I'm, I'm open either way, I, I have, I have no, uh, I mean, I, I mean, my advice is, uh, perhaps I could come back and, and have that discussion with the committee, I think that makes more sense than just saying, go ahead and negotiate this and then, and then walk away, I think that would be part of the process that's, uh, both transparent, provides the committee with the fiduciary responsibility that Mr. Agia just mentioned and, and gives everyone input, so that's what I would do.
Right, and I think that'd be very important, because I don't, again, I understand, we want to help them out, we want to help everyone, we're helping out.
Chairman.
People who can help us, but, I'm sorry.
Can I just ask, if it makes sense to Mr. Hetzler's point, that a member of the committee, whether it's the vice chairman, be that go-to between the superintendent and these bus companies in the committee for informational purposes, so that members feel as though they're a part of this?
I make a motion to nominate Vice Chair Costa to that.
I'll second that.
Okay, hold on a minute, guys, hold on a second, hold on a second. We got a motion on the floor, it's gonna be, Mr. Hetzler still had the floor for a second, hang on, guys. Go ahead, Josh.
So what I was saying, you know, we're paying for these other services, but they're still providing us with something, right? The difference here with transportation is they're not providing us with anything right now. And again, I understand the importance of helping them pay the bills, and pay the vehicle payments, and then all that, to make sure there's a continuity of services when this goes back. And I'm willing to come to some agreement to help them out financially. So, I'm gonna yield now, and let my colleagues take over.
They're gonna make one right now.
I yield.
Dr. Malone.
So I just wanted, for clarity, whatever the committee decides, I'm fine with either come back to the committee, or work through the vice chair to be the communication, I'm fine with both models, whatever the committee decides.
Okay, Mr. Costa.
Thank you, and I apologize to my colleague, Mr. Hetzler, I wasn't trying to jump on anybody who was there, I was just trying to offer some information. If the committee's comfortable with that, and they're looking for some guidance for superintendent, that's fine, and then, just for purposes of getting that information back to members, you know, I certainly think that, you know, superintendent will do a fine job in that, but if members are, want to be part of it, or want to have some input, or want to get some feedback as to how this is going, I certainly don't mind serving in that capacity, if the committee's comfortable with that. If not, then we can give the superintendent some direction, and let him handle it, and then he can respond back to the full committee. I yield, Mr. Chairman.
Attorney Assad?
Yes, thank you. It looks, the way this is scheduled here with respect to tonight, it's payments to vendors. I don't think that's really what we're doing. I think what, what the superintendent needs now is just to get a commitment from the committee that negotiation is to take place. Once that happens, then the negotiation takes place, then it's basically an executive session matter, in terms of what the negotiator is, and what the process goes from there. My recommendation to the committee is to authorize the superintendent to look at the negotiation at the present time, but once that negotiation starts, it switches from a public session to an executive session.
I would draw my motion, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Ms. Larrabee?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just have a question, is transportation the only contract that needs this attention right now?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
The only one that requires the negotiation posture that we're in, or that we're requesting.
Okay, thank you. I yield.
Mr. Agia, then, Mr. Harf.
Just on that particular note, I personally would like to see us authorize the superintendent to negotiate all of the vendor payments, because there's some, I'm sure, there's some variation of parts of a special education contract that might be something that we shouldn't be paying as well. So, I think if we're gonna, as a body, say that we're gonna let him negotiate, it should be with all vendors. I don't know all the special ed contracts individually, but I am sure that due to this time, they're not providing the exact same services as they would be if the child was in school. So I would like to blanketly open this up, rather than approve the motion, because the motion's gonna say, "We will pay all," and they're gonna see it and say, "Well, you know, I just think we should open it up to both." Regarding the buses, I mean, I read in the newspaper that the bus companies laid off all their people. So if you, we don't have any of that info to get how many people are on payroll, what are their, you know, transparency in what they, why do they want the money? We had two, one said a percentage, another one said he wants it all. Like, what the heck is that? It, if we're gonna negotiate, it should be something that's fair, and for us to be fair, this is a city expense. So, the mayor's got struggles with his budget, the city council would have to approve some of those things. I do think that we need to work in collaboration the best we can with them, so that we're not making a decision that's, they're gonna pay the bill for. So, I do think it's, I would approve this motion if it's only to go out, negotiate, and then come back to the committee, rather than, you know, do it, so maybe we can get some more info. And I guess, I would make that recommendation to amend it to all vendors, so that allows the superintendent, if there's a case across wherever, any vendor, that thought they were getting services and they're not, it should be negotiated, rather than just us saying we're gonna pay anybody. So I'd like to make an amendment that we include all vendors in this motion. With that, I yield.
Okay. I have a motion and a second, to include all vendors on payments. Okay, so any further discussion? Mr. Harf?
Yeah, just real quickly, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Mr. Superintendent, on the, on the information that you provided to us, and CC'd to Kevin Almeida, and the, at the end of it in bold letters, you put down that the, assuming services are still provided to the students for special ed, do we know, in fact, if the services are being provided?
Our district placements are providing services, but I think Mr. Agia's point's well taken, that there may be some other components that aren't, and at that time, we would be able to negotiate. So, the answer to your question is, yes, services are being provided, but there may be other aspects of non-student-based services that are part of a contract that we should negotiate. I think--
Okay, that, that's fine, I agree with Mr. Agia's motion, and I know I got a second, and I'll, I'll definitely be in favor of that. But I would say, obviously, going forward with you, Mr. Superintendent, obviously, if there's services that are being rented, that are being provided, of course, we have to pay them. However, I'll wait to hear back from you, as to what is not being, what services are not being provided, and I think that, you know, we gotta take a strong, hard look at that, as to whether we're gonna pay those particular bus companies for something that, we're not, we're gonna pay them for something that they're not, I mean, I'm not in favor of that, but I'll wait to hear back from you with that report. So I yield, thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you.
Any further discussion?
Okay, so, go ahead, Mark.
Can I just have the secretary just repeat the motion, so I understand it correctly?
It was amended, Mr. Agia amended the motion to negotiate with all vendors for payments.
Thank you. I yield.
We have to vote on that first, Deb. So on Mr. Agia's amendment, to include the word "all" in payments to vendors, we have a motion and a second, roll call, Deb.
Mr. Agia?
Yes.
Mr. Costa?
Yes.
Mr. Harf?
Yes.
Mr. Hetzel?
Yes.
Mr. Corey?
Yes.
Ms. Larrabee?
Yes.
Mayor Coogan?
Yes. Now we have to approve the whole thing. Discussion and vote to approve payments to vendors is presented by Dr. Matthew Malone, as amended.
Well--
What is that motion?
For the purpose of negotiations.
Didn't we just resolve that, Mr. Chairman?
I thought we amended it to add the word "all." All we did was add a word, "all vendors," instead of just "vendors."
There was already a motion on the floor, so when I amended it, you had to vote for that one first, now we're voting on basically--
Right.
--the same thing.
Yep.
Why? Sorry, but why?
Because the first one was basically--
Can you just read that back?
Right. The first one was basically transportation, and Kevin's motion made it to include all vendors, whether it's special ed, food, whatever, but it gives the flexibility to come back to executive session and tell us what the superintendent's done with these vendors.
Okay. Mr. Chairman.
Go ahead.
I don't want to muddy the waters, number five says, "payments to vendors," so I would assume that was all-inclusive. I don't know why we get off track talking specifically about transportation, separating them. The discussion item says, "payments to vendors," so I took that to mean all vendors. But, I'll take another vote, I just, I'm not sure procedurally if it's needed, but--
Because of the presentation?
Mr. Malone explained it as transportation, and Kevin opened it up to all vendors.
The literature that we received in our packet said--
The discussion item, "pay all vendors." "Payments to vendors."
And it referred to a presentation by the superintendent, which in the packet, it showed a few others, like special ed services and other ones, so in essence, we were, we were supporting that in general, but I made the motion to include all, just to be a catch-all. So, in essence, I think we're voting on the right thing. I yield.
Yeah, but, but, Mr. Mayor--
Go ahead, Paul.
But, Mr. Mayor, that, what, what Dr. Malone said, as far as vendors, at that, at the end of that, in the bold letters, it's assuming services are still provided to students, and we don't know that for sure. In fact, I think that was what was bundled, and not to confuse everything here, but that was bundled into what I thought Mr. Agia said to bus companies, and this says, like Vice Chair Costa said, "vendors." So, I'm, I don't know, I'm--
Just take the vote and move on.
I just said, let's take the vote, because what if it includes food, or electricity, or whatever? We want to give them the flexibility to negotiate with any of our vendors, that's all it was, not what was just listed in the paper. Roll call, Deb.
Mr. Agia?
Yes.
Mr. Costa?
Yes.
Mr. Harf?
Yes.
Mr. Hetzel?
Yes.
Mr. Corey?
Yes.
Ms. Larrabee?
Yes.
Mayor Coogan?
Yes. Item number six, it's a discussion and vote to approve the district technology reorganization as referred by the--
Motion to approve?
Second.
Any discussion on the motion? Deb, please call the roll.
I got a question.
I'm sorry, Mr. Agia?
I mean, I don't want to go on about it, I did happen to watch the meeting, obviously, there's positions that are in here, but those are all in the budget, I would assume, what was discussed at the subcommittee?
Yes, the three that are in the Verizon grant, that, that we're funding on our side in next year's budget, which we're gonna do anyway, as they are needed.
Yep, the only question I had from watching the meeting, was the new tech facilitators, district tech folks? It looked like, or I think I watched and somebody said, "The ones that are currently there are actually gonna be like the senior, and the other people are junior to them." That's what I thought I heard, and--
I came to that meeting late, so I'll let you answer that question.
Sure, thanks. And while he's walking up there, the only other question I had was on, if we need to vote on those job descriptions, would be an HR or whatever issue that are in there.
The job descriptions that you have before you, two of them have name changes. One is renaming the network, the tech support computer technician job as senior tech support technician. That's not one of the teacher positions that is required for Verizon. And the other one is renaming our data technicians that work in the schools fixing things as junior tech support technicians. That way, there's sort of a difference between the two jobs. The Verizon grant itself requires four teacher-type coaching positions that are called district instructional technology facilitators. That job already exists, we have three of those positions already, one at the high school, one at the middle, and one at the elementary already, that does that job. We included in the packet, an updated job description that included many of the things that are required for the Verizon grant in that. So that way, we'll be posting for that job, you know, sometime in the next week or so, to get a pool of candidates for that job, for the four teachers that will work in the middle schools, one in each school, with Darn and Lord splitting one, and that'll be the teacher position that is funded $38,000 by Verizon, and we have the balance. The remaining position is the addition of four additional junior tech support technicians, and these are required by the Verizon grant, although they don't fund any of it. That has to be the school-based, fix-it-type person that will manage the homebooks distribution, the taking them back in for repairs, and just the overall, you know, maintenance of that fleet of homebooks for each school.
So, those positions are union positions, I'm assuming, and are we hiring them as--
The Verizon ones, the teacher ones, are FREA positions, yes.
So are we hiring them on a three-year, like, the grant is only for so long, are these permanent positions, are they--
They are--
May not be, I'm not putting you on the spot, but, that might be for somebody else to answer.
Well, in terms of whether they are beyond the two years, I'll let Ken--
The ultimate goal would be to keep them on. So they'll be grant-covered for, for the term of the grant, and then, obviously, the positions would be staying on as permanent positions in the FREA.
Right, the only, I'm assuming that we're gonna get good people and all that stuff. The only concern I would have is, I want to say, the details of the Verizon grant allow us, if it turns into a mess, to get out of it halfway through. So if we've hired X people without letting those people know that they're hired for the grant, you know, for that period of the grant, you could see the dilemma that we'd have.
Well, the positions will be grant positions, and they will be paid out of that grant, however, that the, the hiring of any position is gonna go through our regular hiring process, so that that person will obviously be evaluated as to whether or not they're, they have the ability to do the job. I, maybe I'm not following--
So--
We're not stuck with anybody we don't want to be stuck with, is basically--
No, I'm just looking at the position, not necessarily getting stuck with the person, but, when I asked the question when we were doing the Verizon, you know, rollout, there's a time within that grant where we can say, "This is not working out, we're done." At that point, if we do that, then what do we do with, if we're gonna have extra people? We would, truth in advertising, I'm just trying to say, do we want to keep them on forever, or would we just reduce them, and then if they're in the union, how does that work for reductions?
Right. We will bring in four of these positions minus the grant, so if we take the grant out of it, we need these positions. Technology is a huge increase in the Florida Public Schools, we're gonna, hopefully in two years, be 1-01 across the district. We need these additional support positions. At any time, the school committee reserves the right to do a reduction in force, we would follow whatever process there is. But, you know, I don't think that, I don't, I would suggest, recommend the committee move forward with approval, and then, you know, continue to update the committee as to where we are, but I need that capacity, no matter what, whether we got the middle school level grant or not. We don't have enough tech support to support the number of devices in the 21st century learning platform in the system as is.
Yep. The, the other question was around, I don't know who said it, that the people that are here are gonna be the senior and the other people are the junior, but if they're in the union and they're equal, they're equal. I would say, is that just--
All of the non-teacher positions, the, what will be the senior technicians, the junior technicians, they are SNON contracts, there's no, you know, FREA membership or anything like that, so they're just all hired on individual contracts.
Yeah, I was referring to the three, so we have four new, and then the three current instructional technology teachers. I want to say, somebody said at the meeting--
Those are enough FREA positions right now.
That those people are gonna be sort of the senior of that group of seven, and the new ones, but if they're all equal, they're all equal.
In theory, they are all equal in terms of, they're all FREA members, they don't supervise each other. The high school one, so we have three right now, one at the high school who works basically herself at the high school, the high school staff, one at the elementary who does the same, and one at the middle school who also works with the middle school staff. We anticipate the middle school person, that's there now, will have more of a, almost like she'll be writing extra PD for those people on things, I'm not gonna say do with the Verizon grant, like, so, for example, we have five or six different online platforms that we're using at all, even times that she has a good handle on right now, on terms of rostering students, getting staff on, training staff on that. So she'll be also helping those staff, as she currently helps, as well as these new Verizon middle school coaches that we'll be hiring, to get to speak with that as well, because that'll be part of what they'll also be learning to do is--
Yeah, I just watched it, and that's what was said, maybe there's something to work out with them, it sounds like they'd be mentoring like a new teacher, a little bit, but--
Why would any of the, the three people we have now have been on, in our employment for several years in each case, so they're all, you know, mentoring in many different ways right now.
Yeah, I hear you, it's a tall task, so I do agree, we need the positions, I just was concerned if we're, you know, adding things, and then if we have to pull them back, but it sounds like we can do it, so, I, the whole plan itself, I think, is pretty extensive about what you want to do and what we don't want to do. There's things that were in the plan, budgeted, those are in the budget.
Everything that you have in front of you in that Tech 2020 plan has been included in Dr. Malone's budget for your, you know, approval, so--
And I think there was only one or two that was, like, carried over to the wish list, but--
Correct.
The point is, if I vote for this, and then you vote for the budget, it's including those things all in one.
As of now, that, yes, correct.
All right, thank you, good job. I yield.
Anything further? Roll call, Deb.
Mr. Agia?
Yes.
Mr. Costa?
Yes.
Mr. Harf?
Yes.
Mr. Hetzel?
Yes.
Mr. Corey?
Yes.
Ms. Larrabee?
Yes.
Mayor Coogan?
Yes. Item number seven, a discussion and--
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, Mr. Costa?
Just a point of order, if I may, I'm looking at the agenda, and number seven and eight takes both our operational budget and our transportation budget separate, but then nine combines them in one vote, which says that we're referring it to the council. I'm not sure if there's been a change in the charter, but our vote to approve should be referring it to you. You then send the budget as part of the school department and your municipal budget to the council. Unless something's changed, and I prefer to attorney Assad if he has the answer, if not, I apologize for putting him on the spot, but, my understanding was that, we take our vote to approve our budget, it then gets referred to you as city, as the mayor and the city administration, and then goes down to the council as part of your overall city budget. So, I just raised that, because procedurally, I want to make sure we get this correct, and if that's changed, then I stand corrected, and we can move forward. I yield.
Kevin Almeida has a clarifying comment.
So, this is, this is the same process that we followed this past year, I, we checked on it this past year, and so this was the same process. I don't, I don't disagree with you, that this budget, once approved tonight, it goes to the mayor, who then builds it into this budget, but as a body, we still have to propose to send the budget to the city council. That's, you know, that's my understanding.
No, no, I'm okay with voting to approve the operating budget and the transportation budget separate, because I think it needs to be done separate, but, number nine requests then that one vote be taken to refer it to the city council, and I don't know if that's new, I don't ever recall as referring anything to the city council. It's always referred to the management office, and then he compiles his overall budget, school department included, and sends it down.
That's correct.
I don't disagree with that, that is correct, but, but I believe as a body, we still need to submit the budget to the city council as well, correct? Am I wrong, Bruce?
I believe, I believe what we've done in the past is, is a little bit of a difference in terms of what the intent is. The intent is always that, this is the, the bottom line, that we would like to go to the council, however, by law, it's up to the mayor to submit that budget, or any other budget that he chooses.
Absolutely.
All right, but we still have to take seven and eight votes separately, I guess--
Yeah.
Go ahead, Mr. Harf.
Yeah, I mean, you could, I mean, if you wanted to, on number nine, you could just say, amend it to say mayor and the Florida City Council, because what happens is, when the city council votes, when the city council puts together an agenda, the mayor and the president of the city council decide what goes on that agenda, so--
I think, I think Mr. Assad's saying, "It just goes to me," and then, as Mr. Costa said, "I combine it with the rest of the city budget." So that number nine should read, "The fiscal year 2021 annual budget of the four of us public schools to the mayor."
Okay, with a, with a recommendation to go to the city council?
Yes.
That'd be appropriate, I think it gets the, it addresses what the law is, and also the intent of the vote.
Do we have to amend that when we get there, Mr.?
Yes.
All right, so we're going to amend that when we get to number nine, let's do seven and eight first. So let's go back to seven. Discussion and vote to approve. Second.
I have discussion, Mr. Chair.
Mr. Corey.
Oh, yeah, Dr. Malone, just for my own clarity, I'm, I mean, I thought the proposal so far for the budget looked absolutely wonderful in our previous meetings. What are we looking at with coronavirus care and resumption of school and budgets? Anything shaken down, are we going to be able to move forward with our planned budget?
Well, it's, so the governor's released his numbers, as everyone knows, there is conversations happening on the Hill right now with the House and the Senate, I know there's economists coming in tomorrow to talk about revenue projections. All I can say to you for sure is that we're operating from a position that it will be the traditional process up through the last day of the fiscal year to pass a state budget. We've had no indication as to what the bottom line will finally be for us, but the budget that we built, I think, is a sound budget that meets the needs of the kids in the Fall River. Hopefully, we can support it and make further decisions down the road, and of course, what the committee's voting is a, is a number, not necessarily a composition, because all that is, can be subject to change in terms of various line items up to the end of the process.
Transportation, okay.
Well, Dr. Malone, is this going to affect any of the Student Opportunity Act monies? Have you heard at all, anything?
Yeah, so, depends on who you talk to on the Hill, I mean, this is, you know, a law was passed last year to change how we fund schools, and let's hope that the state upholds its constitutional obligation to support that change in the law. All I can say to you is that the governor's number is the number that began the process. We built our budget from that number, I'm still anticipating that I think the number will end up slightly higher than what the governor's number was, but, you know, also at the same time, revenue projections are down, no one's working in the Commonwealth, and, you know, I don't know if the federal money is going to be able to support the state coffers, if you will, they got a three-point-something-billion-dollar rainy day fund, it's definitely raining, so we'll see what happens, we'll have more information as we go, but it's, we've been told to proceed through the traditional timeline process, and that's what we're doing.
Thank you, Mr. Superintendent, thank you, Mr. Chair, with that, I yield.
Okay, I, um-
Mayor, mayor?
Go ahead.
Can, can you just have the motion to state the dollar amount?
Yes. On both, on both, when we get to eight, the same thing. I'm looking for an amendment or a motion to add the dollar amount in and to remove the word proposed.
Chairman?
Mr. Costa.
Well, I'll move that the approval of the fiscal year 2021 annual operating budget of the Fall River Public Schools in the amount of $120,343,118.
Second. Okay, so on number seven, it's now going to read, the fiscal year 2021 annual budget of the Fall River Public Schools in the amount of $120,343,118. Do I have a second?
Yes.
Mr. Chairman, that's the operating budget, because not inclusive of indirects.
Correct. Mr. Agia?
So I am in favor of this, it is a question of the time we're in and how much money we're going to have, how much money the state is going to be able to support with the various pools of money. I do know that they have a tall task ahead of them, because there's so many competing interests on, at the State House. I do think this number was a little over 100% of what the governor put in, and it basically showed us what we need to service our kids, so I don't want to support anything that's not to that level of what we did with all of our budget hearings. At the same time, I think I would ask my colleagues to be very cautious in what monies we spend currently for the rest of the year, so that we can build our own little nest egg in the event that something happens where the city is in a bind, or the state comes down and says, well, we can't fund it at 120 million, whatever it is. We all are on record saying, all these services that we just talked about, that kids need in Fall River, totals this amount, so I think we should support this, but also be cautious as we're spending future monies, to say, let's put a little nest egg in, so that, starting in September, God willing, if, you know, we're in school at that time, we can support the needs of the kids, rather than worrying about whether it's 100%, or 105, or whatever it is, 100.5. The mayor has a tall task, his first time doing a budget, we've always talked about 100% being an important number, I don't think he's going to back off of that, but we also need to support him and the city in understanding how can we work together to make sure this works for us all, so I will support it, but I'm not trying to put anybody on the spot, but I do know that we need to be very cautious, because it is raining, as the superintendent said, and we might need our own little rainy day fund. With that, I yield.
I have a comment, I thought we were going to stay at 100%, Mr. Superintendent.
We brought forward a budget 100.56 of the governor's number, and at the end of the day, that's up to you to decide whether we're funding it 100 of the final number or, or 100 of the, of the number. I brought forward a budget that I was, again, that built on last year's gains, it's less than my request in the past in terms of 101%, but it was at 100.56.
Well, wasn't what we were talking about, so we'll talk again later.
Can I add a comment again?
Sure.
Just try to put that conversation in a little bit of perspective as well. When we first were looking at whether it's 100%, 101, or 100.5, everyone in the whole universe, basically, understood that the governor's number was dead on arrival, and the House and Senate were going to do more, so it was really a number of, not trying to put anybody on the spot, but I think it was knowing that we typically get more from the House and the Senate. At that point, that sort of goes hand in hand with what I was talking about, that if, by chance, as we go through this process, that's 300,000, 500,000, whatever it is, we should be, if we're frugal and we watch what we're doing, in a position to help with that. So I think that we all need to be cognizant of, that we're in this thing together, let's work together, but at the same time, we'll try to, we'll try to be prepared in case it doesn't get to that point. It might come out that there's, all these numbers are different, and we're only at, you know, the new numbers could say we're a million dollars off, even from the state. I'm just trying to say, let's be prepared for that number too, because we need those services, so. With that, I yield, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Okay, we have a motion and a second. Deb, can you read the new wording?
To approve the FY 2021 annual operating budget in the amount of $120,343,118.
Any further discussion? Roll call.
Mr. Agia?
Yes.
Mr. Costa? Mr. Har?
Yes.
Mr. Hetzel?
Yes.
Mr. Corey?
Yes.
Ms. Lareve?
Yes.
Mayor Coogan?
Abstain. Item number eight, again, I think it's going to be the same kind of similar wording.
Yes.
Discussion and vote to approve, I would take out proposed fiscal year 2021 budget of the Fall River Public Schools in the amount of $10,794,283.
Some of-
I need a-
A sec.
That's on the amendments, taking out proposed and putting the money in, correct?
As you worded it, Mr. Chairman.
All right, motion, Mr. Hart?
I just have one quick question regarding this, maybe Superintendent Malone or Kevin, for the total that we're approving for the transportation budget at $10,794,283, I guess, and then on number 11, Kevin's going to be giving his year-to-date budget report, but how, how much of that, how much have we expended so far for transportation?
Well, why don't we wait till we get to that, Mr. Hart?
I'm sorry?
Why don't we wait till we get to number 11, because he can explain it to us then?
Oh, okay, that's, that's fine, good.
Mr. Costa. Mr. Costa.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Correct me if I'm wrong, though, I think on transportation, it probably should be proposed, because still practice of going out for bids, that, that number, that $10,794,283 may not in fact be the actual transportation budget, it's needed to, that one, I suggest we consider sending it as a proposed transportation, but-
All right, so we'll leave it.
Because, if it does, it certainly can be decided or voted on separately then. I don't rate that as an issue, or more of a suggestion, if you will.
That's fine, we'll leave proposed in and leave the amount in. Anything further? Mr. Agia?
Just a comment on the, what I said before about the city having this be a city expense versus a school expense, I don't have a good answer to it, but I think including the council in the discussion, I've always felt there was a, sort of a problem with the way that this always goes, that we vote for something, but the city council is the one that has to work with the mayor to actually fund it. I think it, there's some confusion there, confusion there, so I think as we go through this process, if there's any way to include the city council in some way legally and information, I know we're supposed to have a joint meeting, that's probably not going to happen, but I've always felt that we could vote all we want, to say, okay, we're going to vote the transportation number, whatever it was, and then they have to pay the bill. Well, we don't know, I don't know personally, if the city's able to pay that bill, and how do we communicate that is really the issue, so I think it's just a general comment, I'm going to support the number, but whether that's the administration of the school department, because we are a public body and all that stuff, somehow, I think the city council, or a subcommittee of the city council, needs to get some information on what, where we're at with transportation, so that they're the ones paying the bill, that they actually have some sort of say. That's just a suggestion. With that, I yield, and I will support, thanks.
Mr. Costa.
Chairman, and I, here, and I agree with him, it is, it is a city expense, but it is a responsibility of approval of transportation, this body take that vote, so that's why it's projected to be proposed. I think the opportunity for the council to address it will be once it gets to them, but I think any information that Mr. Pacheco can share with the city council when this number gets to them, as to where we are, certainly is helpful, but I suggest that it be proposed, because ultimately, the council could decide based on fight, that that's a number that they're unable to fulfill, so I think it's our recommendation to them as a proposed transportation budget. I agree with Mr. Agia, and I think Mr. Pacheco should share any and all information about where we are in the bid process, and what we anticipate that number to be, so that they have all the information when they deliberate whether to approve it or not. With that, I yield.
I was going to get a bottle of water, any further discussion? Deb, read the, read the motion, please.
Vote to approve the proposed FY 2021 transportation budget for the Fall River Public Schools in the amount of $10,794,283.
Roll call, Deb.
Mr. Agia?
Yes.
Mr. Costa?
Yes.
Mr. Har?
Yes.
Mr. Hetzel?
Yes.
Mr. Corey?
Yes.
Ms. Lareve?
Yes.
Mayor Coogan?
Abstain. Number nine, vote to refer the fiscal year 2021 Fall River Public School budget to the mayor of Fall River with the recommendation of 120343118. Discussion-
Chairman, I would just be, the operating budget, Mr. Chairman, I would just add that as some part of the motion.
Okay, 12343118, operating budget.
So moved.
So moved.
Is this the, is this the one where we're supposed to put the city cost in it, or is it? The 176, you know, like, in paragraph two?
No, this is, this is just a referral to the mayor with the request of the city council that we just talked about.
That's it, so the second paragraph here is just informational.
Correct.
With that, I yield, thank you.
Any further discussion? Roll call, please, Deb.
Mr. Agia?
Yes.
Mr. Costa?
Yes.
Mr. Har?
Yes.
Mr. Hetzel?
Yes.
Mr. Corey?
Yes.
Ms. Lareve?
Yes.
Mayor Coogan?
Abstain. Number 10, first read and discussion, principals executive team salary matrix is presented by Dr. Malone.
So it brought forward to the committee, as promised, it's taken us long, I want to thank our HR team for working on this, but this is just our discussion around creating a salary matrix for principals, there's no need for dialogue tonight, what I'd ask is perhaps that the committee refer this to a subcommittee, which would likely be finance, which is a committee of the whole, or it could go, we don't have an HR committee, the subcommittee, right, so likely to finance.
Okay, looking for, looking for a referral to the finance subcommittee, Mr. Agia?
I would certainly make that a referral, but I think just as part of a discussion, we all, we have to really look at this with a lens of, we want to have the best people servicing our kids that we can have, and competitively, when you look around an area, our principals mainly are underpaid when it gets to looking at how much their compensation is. The, our union contracts get passed on a regular basis, and when you look at the analysis of how much an assistant principal would make in Fall River versus how much a principal makes, they're very close in a lot of areas, and I've said this in the past, that I, I think it's, it's the going rate to get the quality of people that we have. We have a lot of principals that are busting their rear ends, working hard, and they need to be compensated accordingly, and I don't want to lose good people to other districts based on another district giving $10,000 more to a principal's range than what we do. I do think we need to look at this with an open mind, and also understanding the comparison around the districts that are closest to us, but also the union contracts, I think we have to really spell that out. We have situations where we'll have an assistant making 108,000 in a union, and a 12-month employee principal, with all the responsibilities and no protection relative to a union, makes 110 or 111. I don't think that that range makes sense, so however we look at this as we go forward, I, not only compare to other places, but you have to look at it internally and see how much are people making relative to the person that's directly under them. In every organization, you basically have that same scenario, but I don't think that we're, we haven't raised the principal salaries up high enough to be above the vice principals and say, why would you be a principal then, if you're only going to make a few thousand dollars more, with no protection whatsoever, so I'm definitely in favor of furthering this discussion, and I urge my colleagues to take a good look at it. With that, I yield.
Mr. Chairman?
Mr. Corey?
Yes, and so, I'd like to, Dr. Malone, is this a comparative model to other districts, the model that you guys drew up?
So, yes, so we use a matrix model comparative to other districts, we have district data, we got more data, we put forward, we look forward to bringing it all to a finance subcommittee for discussion, I think that's, in an answer to questions, I know there'll be a ton of questions, I think Mr. Agia's point is, there's a lot of stuff in here everyone really needs to take a look at, and I agree that this gets very complex, but this is a, what we're proposing, what I'm bringing forward, is a different model, it's not just a range, but it takes into account school size, special programming, et cetera, that gets us into a range that makes sense, that would allow us to be competitive.
Any further discussion?
Yeah, I, I lost the end of that, it just dropped off, but I have one more question.
Go ahead, Mr.-
So, so, Dr. Malone, so when it comes to, are you- are you hearing me?
Yes.
It's breaking up.
We got you.
Go ahead, Tom, go ahead.
Okay, so Dr. Malone, how do we sell ourselves to these prospective recruits for principals? Because in the NISL model, the superintendent is the governor, but the superintendent's the president, but principals are the governors. So it's really important to get great principals on board because they drive their schools. So how do we sell these jobs when an opening comes up? Do we have, are there improvements? Are there job fairs? What goes on?
Yeah, well, I think we're very active in the competitive world when we have an open principalship. Couple ways, folks internally that we train up and get ready. Sometimes we move folks from building to building. We get outside candidates when we post on school spring and do attend the job fairs that Mr. Coogan and his team have been attending. But there's also other foundations and groups that train principals that we work with. So when we have a pool, when we have a posting, we get a pool of candidates and then we rank order through. It does get tough competing with some of the other districts that I call the South Coast Triangle, so it starts up at Brockton, Brockton, Taunton, Attleboro, Fall River, New Bedford, over to the Cape and back up. I mean, you know, we, things do get challenging for us sometimes, and some of the other places pay a bit more. I think we've underpaid our principals here for a while. I think you guys, the committee gave me the go-ahead on a range change a couple years ago when I said I'd come back in a couple years, kept my word on that. But this is a different model. It takes into consideration degrees, special programs, school size, and it's something that most places are moving towards. Brockton actually uses this model now as well. But we, I think we, people, if you're asking me what, we have a good reputation. I mean, people, people want to work here. They want to work here, they want to invest their time here. We've done a really good job, I think, of promoting from within. I think we've done a really good job also of attracting some outside talent as well. But I like the blend model. I mean, one of the things that gets me so excited in this work is, you know, like our intern program, how do we get our next level of VPs ready? And then when those VPs are ready, when do they want to become principals? Mr. Aguirre is right, though, it's been a fine line between what VPs make and what principals make, and sometimes it's hard to get folks to say, okay, I'll commit to doing this much bigger job. You're right, it is like being a governor. You're the executive of a site, and all the headaches and responsibilities and the 24-hour-a-day work is yours. So I think this discussion will hopefully lead us to a place where we're able to come up with something that makes sense, that meets the needs of the district, but also meets our financial needs as well.
I'll close my comments by saying I like the whole idea. It's really good, but I really like the idea of promoting from within as well. I think if we can look at our own and try to establish a line of promotion within our own, I think we'll build a strong community that way. With that, I yield, Mr. Chair.
Motion referred to finance subcommittee.
Deb, second?
Seconded.
Any further discussion, roll call, Deb.
Mr. Aguirre?
Yes.
Mr. Costa?
Yes.
Mr. Har?
Yes.
Mr. Hetzel?
Yes.
Mr. Corey?
Yes.
Ms. Lareve?
Yes.
Mayor Coogan?
Yes. Item number 11 is a discussion and vote to approve the year-to-date budget report as presented by Kevin Almeida.
Motion made?
Second.
Second?
We have a motion and a second, any further discussion?
Just a quick question.
Go ahead, Mr. Har.
Just, Kevin, on the student transportation, how much are we, how much have we not spent so far this year?
So as of right now?
Spent?
So as of right now, we're about $6.2 million that we've spent. The budget is actually nine, the number's a little deceiving because it includes athletics in it, but it's just over $9 million, so roughly $3 million unspent currently.
So we have 3. what million still in the budget?
It's about $3 million that's not spent as of yet.
Okay. All right, that's all I needed to know, Mr. Mayor, thank you.
Anything further?
Question?
Mr. Aguirre?
Just, you might not have this here, just, do you know offhand how many vacancies we have currently? When we went, can you get that to us?
I can, yes.
Just curious to see as of whatever it was, March, whatever. And the ones that are highlighted in yellow, is that down the agenda somewhere? Is that the transfers?
That's what I'll have for you for a transfer next month.
Not this meeting.
Correct.
Obviously, they're not, it doesn't seem that there's too many at the present time, but if you could get us that info and be cognizant of
I will.
trying to create a little cushion in case we need it at the end of the year. With that, I yield, thank you.
Oh, Mr. Mayor, I do have another question, I'm sorry.
Go ahead, Mr. Har.
Kevin, what are the, what is the operations contingencies, 53007?
So that's the account that we set up at the beginning of the year for the budget for additional, potential additional things that come up over the course of the year. At this time, we haven't, we haven't used it as of yet, it's still there.
Okay, and same thing with operations contingencies?
Yes.
Okay, thank you, thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Anything further?
One question.
Go ahead, Kev.
So just, I don't think I see it on here, but we had received a letter from the DESE about the money that was owed from the budgeted amount versus the actuals. And I bring this up now because it's in the current year. Can you give us an update on where we're at with that amount of money?
Sure. So item number 13, in that item, the city council in March, with the mayor brought forward a transfer for $870,294. The letter from the DESE said that we were short on the net school spending requirement by 3. roughly $3.8 million. With that transfer for $870,000, I don't have the exact dollar in front of me, but it's the number after the 870 is about $2.8 million is where we stand.
So that's money that the city budgeted in one line that's not, so is that real money that we should expect?
So the major difference this year from the letter from the DESE was there was a big variation, a big change from when the end of the year report was submitted to when we got our certified number due to the charter schools. And so the charter school amount decreased significantly. So that's why the net school spending requirement went up.
But that's real money, though, that's not
Yes, it is, it is.
So I would just, and I'm not trying to put the mayor on the spot because it's his finance team that really, the letter that I read said March 31st, we need to come to an agreement or at least some kind of acknowledgement. I don't think we met that, and granted, there's a crisis going on, but I do think that's an important number relative to this budget, plus what I suggested before about us creating an opportunity to save some money in the current budget. So I, I don't know if anybody has any more info on that issue, but I think it's incumbent on this committee to maybe by Friday get an answer in writing from the city on that because that's a large pot of money, and I just don't know why we haven't gotten it yet personally, but with that, I yield.
Anything further on this? Roll call, Deb.
Mr. Aguirre?
Yes.
Mr. Costa?
Yes.
Mr. Har?
Yes.
Mr. Hetzel?
Yes.
Mr. Corey?
Yes.
Ms. Lareve?
Yes.
Mayor Coogan?
Yes. Discussion item number 12 is a discussion and vote to approve one-on-one devices for student usage for remote learning as presented by Dr.
Motion to approve?
Second.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Mr. Costa?
Mr. Superintendent, are you looking for this committee to adopt a policy on one-to-one usage? Or you just, you want us to give you the authority to go ahead and?
No, this is a, this is a policy, it's an amendment of, it's a policy adoption.
Right, but it said discussion and vote to approve one-on-one device student use for remote learning. So you're looking for a policy from us, or you're looking for the authorization to go ahead and do one-on-one learning?
I'm looking for both, but it should say policy because what we have included here is a policy. It's an addendum to your policy.
So we're going to have to clean that up? So you're looking for a policy?
Yes, I'm sorry, that's my fault.
No, I want to be clear as to what you're asking for, that's all. I just, if you're looking for a policy, because I saw the policy in the book, you attached a policy for information, so I just want to make sure I was on the same page. So remotely needs to be amended to, you're looking for a policy for one-to-one device student usage for remote learning?
Yes. So it should be a one-to-one student usage policy for remote learning.
So moved.
Okay, I'll make that a form of amendment, Chairman.
I have a second?
Second.
Second.
Any further discussion? Mr. Hetzel?
Yes.
Question?
Hang on a minute, Mr. Corey, you're next.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, just on the device loan agreement. Number three, under the student pledge for RPS laptop use. We got a typo in the middle of that. Instead of saying device, it says devised.
Yep, got you.
All right, thank you. I yield.
Mr. Corey?
Yes, Mr. Chair, Dr. Malone, I'm totally in favor of this motion. I'm glad that we can provide devices for the proper usage. My concern is over abuse, and I see on, under Chromebook Care that students will be responsible for the entire cost and repairs to Chromebooks that are damaged intentionally. That's the part that concerns me. As long as our Chromebooks are taken care of, because they're expensive, and we get that message out, you know, as they're being handed out. With that, I yield.
Yes.
Mr. Aguirre?
I'm also in favor of this, definitely, I think this is something that's needed. I asked at the last meeting if Verizon could get us those other ones quicker. Obviously, that can't happen. I do think that the, we do pay for Edge Annuity, the online platform, and there's students at the high school level, both at the high school and RPS, that utilize that. And I think they could benefit from actually using these devices, you know, to make up the credits that they owe, some credit recovery at the high school or at the other school. I really think this is a smart decision. While at the same time, I was aware of what the superintendent said, if we are going to have an extended closure, we also need to look at what do we do for other kids? That's always an important piece, but this is definitely something that is needed yesterday to get these kids working on something that, and for those in the public that don't understand, this is not, this is an actual program that you go on, that you can watch videos, see people teaching, you can take quizzes, they can set up, see whether they passed or not, there's records of it. You can, the teachers and the staff can see how long students are on, are they idle, are they answering questions? So this is a legit online opportunity for kids to earn their credits. So I definitely think it's important, and if we have to expand it, if we're out longer, I would vote in favor of that as well. With that, I yield.
Anything further?
One more question, if I may?
Mr. Corey, and then Mr. Costa.
Yes, so who will be responsible for device care? Is it the tech department?
Yeah, well, so, yes, we're going to work with the leadership at RPA and DURFI. We have a list of kids who are enrolled in credit recovery and those who should be, then we'll administer the devices to those that are needed. Not all kids will need devices. And then we'll track, and you can see the forms that we have here, give us the accountability to track and record who has what, what the expectations are, and then we'll retrieve them when that's done.
And when the devices, when their usage is over and the contract expires, who takes the device back? The tech department?
Yes, we will, we have a whole accountability, we'll do it at the site level. So this will be specific to RPA and DURFI, and we'll be able to get back the devices, keep track, and then as we think about rollouts in the future, use, you know, use the supply chain to make that happen.
Thanks a lot, I yield.
Mr. Costa? You can't hear him? Mark, you on mute?
Just want to make sure that the record reflects that the committee's waiving all readings on the adoption of this policy.
Thank you.
Typically, when you have a policy, Mr. Chairman, we do a first read, a second read, so if you want to enact this, then we got to waive those read, the reading, first and second read.
Motion to waive all readings.
Second.
On the motion. Deb, please call the roll.
Mr. Aguirre?
Yes.
Mr. Costa?
Yes.
Mr. Har?
Yes.
Mr. Hetzel?
Yes.
Mr. Corey?
Yes.
Ms. Lareve?
Yes.
Mayor Coogan?
Yes. Now on the actual, item number 12, we have an amendment from Mr. Costa. It's going to read, discussion and vote to approve one-on-one device student usage, inserting the word "policy" for remote learning. On that amendment, Deb, please call the roll.
Mr. Aguirre?
Yes.
Mr. Costa?
Yes.
Mr. Har?
Yes.
Mr. Hetzel?
Yes.
Mr. Corey?
Yes.
Ms. Lareve?
Yes.
Mayor Coogan?
Yes. Now on the discussion item itself, looking to approve the student usage policy for remote learning. Deb, please call the roll. Oh, I need a motion in a second, guys. I have a motion?
Second.
Please call the roll, Deb.
Mr. Aguirre?
Yes.
Mr. Costa?
Yes.
Mr. Har?
Yes.
Mr. Hetzel?
Yes.
Mr. Corey?
Yes.
Ms. Lareve?
Yes.
Mayor Coogan?
Yes. Item number 13 is discussion and vote to approve the spending of the school appropriation transfer from the city council.
Second.
Any further discussion?
Yes.
Kevin, go ahead.
So in light of the conversations that we've been having about spending money and all that, I have a couple of questions on this, the spending that's here. Specifically, are these all needed in full? Or is these, are these expenditures that can be sort of pieced together a little bit?
So, no, these are, so, these are, we've been working on these expenditures for quite some time. So the, you know, the Talbot Middle School project is going to cost more than this, but this gets us a significant piece of the way. Same with Henry Lord, same with Sylvia, and then the resiliency work is much needed. This is just the first of that figure that we talked about before. In terms of carryover for next year, you know, we frozen spending and those kinds of things, we'll have money to be able to move around, but these are things that we figured would be great use for this money because we can't use it for this year, so it's one-time expense on capital projects that we have needs for.
So the first one, Talbot, $475,000, that's ready to work? Or I thought I saw the meeting, the facilities meeting where there was some more planning that needed to be done, or is this the planning? $475,000? These are all valid projects, I'm not trying to question. I'm just looking at it as if, you know.
The Talbot project is broken up into phases, as you just stated. The drainage on the city side is ready to move, and this would take care of the drainage on the cities, on the school side within the property limits, and also begin the process of the pavement curbing and repairs to all of the parking areas.
the process of the pavement curbing and repairs to all of the parking areas.
So on all of these expenses, are they, in the next 60 days, gonna be spent?
They will be bid and ready to, to be done. They will not be completed by July 1, but they will be, the money will be encumbered.
Right, so let's say, just hypothetically, June 1 comes, city budgets crash, state budgets crashed, we don't have the funds in order to pay the staff that we just decided that we needed to hire. City doesn't come through with the 1.8, 2.8, whatever they had, now what?
We can't use those funds for that expense, Kevin. This is last year's money. We gotta spend it.
Right.
But you could pay things currently that...
I don't mean sped transportation, or I mean sped tuition, maybe, those kinds of things, but you gotta be real careful with doing that, too. So, I mean, this is probably the best use of one-time money. Pooling money, continuing to another fiscal year from the fiscal year behind it, I don't think we'd get approval from that. What's your opinion?
Since this is one-time money, we really should use it on, you know, on one-time costs, so to speak. The issue with prepaying tuition, because, you know, that's a popular term that's used, is that down the line, you create a financial problem. So it's, it's nice when you have the, you know, when you have the extra money, but down the line, it does become a problem, so.
Right. So the question that I had that was very specific to what do we do in June? We're in a crisis here. And if the bottom falls out of everybody's budgets, I don't want to be in a situation where we just spent $850,000 on repairs, and meanwhile, the budget in the, you know, subsequent year, whether it's, should happen, is it a normal practice? We're not in normal practices right now. That's my only concern. These are valid, I've been there, I went with superintendent to see the drainage problem, I get it. All I'm saying is, is that what happens if the bottom crashes out of the budget? And I personally think that the city should request to the state delegation that they actually pass all these municipal relief bills that they keep talking about? They need to make one that says the schools can actually create and keep their own rainy day fund. That, I've told people in the state that, they don't want to listen, but if anybody that's got their ear, this makes sense. So we could take all the money that we have saved, put it in an account that the school committee would have a say over, instead of this nonsense of having to keep prepaying sped, carry things over, and finagle the books a little bit. I think that should happen. All I'm concerned about in these very valid expenses is are we gonna be in a position, and I haven't heard from the city to say they're gonna give us the 2.8 million? I haven't heard from the city on what their budget looks like. I haven't heard from the state. We all haven't, whether they're gonna fund the schools even at the governor's number. So, given all those things, should we still spend it? That's my only question. You guys are all saying it's good, I think it's valid expenses, just keep it in mind that if the budget crashes all over the place, we're gonna be in a real tough spot. So, I'm gonna support it because you guys want it, and it's, it's valid, but I think I made my point. I yield.
Anything further? Roll call, Deb.
Mr. Agia?
Yes.
Mr. Costa?
Yes.
Mr. Hart?
Yes.
Mr. Hetzel?
Yes.
Mr. Corey?
Yes.
Ms. Lareve?
Yes.
Mayor Coogan?
Yes. Last item on the discussion is a vote to approve Durfee Solar, as referred by the Facilities and Operations Subcommittee, presented by Ken Pacheco. Do I have a motion?
Yeah, I made the motion.
Second?
Second.
Any discussion?
Yes.
Let's hear what Mr. Pacheco has to say first.
Certainly.
So, the project is a few months old. I think this was first brought up in either October or November of last year, and we have been working with the construction project with Suffolk to, to make sure that they were ready for this project. They gave us a, a date of September that they would have the roof on the field house. This is the upper roof on the field house that the solar array would be located. We, we have been in contact with Select Solar. Matt Short Sleeve, who is the representative, who we've been dealing with for the past eight months or so, presented the, before this committee early on, and it was referred back to Subcommittee. It sat in Subcommittee for a while, and we put it back on the agenda for more discussion. We're running against the timeline now of not being able to get all of our permitting process finished in time to be ready for the, for the Durfee project. It is a, a very good project. The number has come down, the price, so to speak, per kilowatt hour from Select that the solar panel company would guarantee for the next 10 year, 20 years, I'm sorry. It is a good number. It's a little over 10 cents, and we were at 11 and change before. We, we will be saving a significant amount of money over, over the course of the project. We don't own the utility. All we own is the guarantee of a price. We, there's, there's two other components to this. This is first step one. The second step would be to seek, to seek a lease, provide a lease to the solar company, which would be on the city side, and also to enter into a pilot agreement for the city to receive monies and lower taxes for the solar array on the roof of that building.
Any questions for Mr. Pacheco?
Yes, Mr. Chair.
Okay, Kevin, and then Tommy. Go ahead.
So I, I looked through it quick. The, the pilot is $4,000 a year, basically?
Yes.
And the other amounts, I was confused. What, what do, we're gonna save money if we put this on in the school department, correct?
So we don't own it, so it'll be on the roof, it'll be owned by Select Solar, and all we're basically doing is letting them use the roof. They'll be paying that, that pilot and lower taxes to the city for having it on the roof. We will also receive a locked-in electricity rate for 20 years.
And what does that come out to estimated savings per year, roughly?
I have, I'm not quite sure if Matt is on.
Okay. I can look at it. Roughly, I mean, is it $100,000, $200,000?
Savings per year?
Yeah, so if we didn't have this, we're gonna pay X amount for electric, the way I understand it.
It's pretty close to $100,000 a year.
Right. So I'm in favor of this. I do think it's, I was in favor of it the last time, and then we got other experts came in and told you what they wanted to tell you, but the, I would recommend that we look into, so the, the Durfee facility is, you got the building project, and then we're gonna save. So, in my thought, let's say we saved $100,000 per year. I would like to take that savings, rather than call it electric, and put it into the facilities at the high school for things that may not be able to be done through the, the grant. I look at the auditorium, there's needs at the auditorium, there's needs in maybe a field if we can't do it, and things like that. So I would be in favor, and this doesn't have to be decided today, but if you look into, is that even possible, to say, the savings, if we can say it's $100,000 per year, and we looked at putting that money into a building account for the high school property, thinking ahead, if we need to do something at the auditorium, we need a, a million-dollar bond, if there's some kind of thing that needs to happen in order to replace that and make it a quality facility, this money could be sitting in a pot to pay that bill, and we would get it recurring over the 20 years, rather than have it be buried within that $120 million budget that we're not gonna see. There's definitely a need for other things at the high school. So I'm in favor of this, but I, I would throw that out there as a, something that you might want to look at, of what do we do with that savings, rather than just call it, you know, $100,000 savings in here? If we could create an account and pay that bill, we can't keep going to the city and say, well, we're gonna redo the auditorium, pay that, pay that, pay that. It just, at some point, we gotta do it on our own. That would be a suggestion, and I do support it, and thank you for your hard work on this. I know it's been a long time coming. I yield.
Anything further? Tommy?
Mr. Chair, yeah. So Ken, in regard to the solar contract, first of all, good work. Ken, was that gentleman that presented at our meeting a few months back?
He, it is, it is the same gentleman.
Yeah, he, he went on and on and on, but he seemed thorough. I'm looking at the table contents right now, and it looks extremely thorough. So this company, Select, you know that they're a good company? Their track record is good?
It's, it's very good. We have a lot of recommendations, and they have a lot of properties, and also a lot of holdings as far as, as solar arrays. They produce quite a bit of solar, like, electric.
Yeah, so they, they seem like a good company. So, this Durfee project, are we, are there projections to have solar for other buildings down the road?
So we currently have three PPAs on the buildings, this being one of them. We also have Morton and Sylvia, and then we have one solar array on Morton that we own. The, the ownership of the, is expensive, and that, the reason why we own that one at Morton was part of an MSBA project. It actually was one of the last projects that MSBA got involved with, with Solar.
So the only thing that concerns me moving forward, good company, good product, will save a lot of money down the road, is indemnification. I just want to make sure that we, we got our own back in case anything goes wrong down the road.
So, so...
Do we have our own back? We got a leg to stand on?
Yes.
Maybe that's a question for your side?
Yes, we do. We do, and it's pretty comprehensive. The roof is inspected before, during, and after the installation by Roof and Company, and is certified.
Thank you. With that, I yield, Mr. Chair.
Anything further on Durfee Solar? Josh?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So I have a number of concerns with Solar, and I raised them last time, and perhaps the time before that, we talked about Solar. It's obviously, it's on the roof, you know, is it damaging the roof? Is it gonna be attached to the roof, or is it gonna be held down with ballast? What if a panel blows off the roof during a hurricane? So I have, there's a number of concerns I have, but, I mean, as you've stated, we have these solar arrays on other buildings, and disagreement in your opinion, and hopefully Attorney Assad had a chance to look at it, kinda covers us, and keeps us free or limits our liability.
So we'll be in, and the city, obviously, will have the, the, the Corporation Council will also take a look at the contract, basically for the lease and also for the pilot, and to make sure that the city is, is covered well.
Excellent. Thank you. I yield.
Anything further? Roll call, Deb.
Mr. Agia?
Yes.
Mr. Costa?
Yes.
Mr. Hart?
Yes.
Mr. Hetzel?
Yes.
Mr. Corey?
Yes.
Ms. Lareve?
Yes.
Mayor Coogan?
Yes. Item number 12 is committee, I mean, is 13, is four-year information?
Motion to adopt and place on file, Mr. Chairman.
Second.
Check it in. Roll call, Deb.
Mr. Agia?
Yes.
Mr. Costa?
Yes.
Mr. Hart?
Yes.
Mr. Hetzel?
Yes.
Mr. Corey?
Yes.
Ms. Lareve? Ms. Lareve?
Yes.
Mayor Coogan?
Yes. Item number 14, new business. Does anybody? I couldn't hear him. What? I couldn't hear you, Mr. Hart. New business. Does, does anybody have any topics to come before the committee tonight?
I'm sorry.
Can you tell what he's saying?
He said, "I'm sorry."
Oh. Okay. Do we have a reason to go into executive session?
It would be, Mr. Chair, if you'd like, I could read the reasons.
Please, Mr. Assad.
National Law Chapter 38, Section 2187, to review and approve executive session committee minutes for the March 9, 2020 regular meeting of the Forward School Committee, also National Law Chapter 38, Section 2187, to review and approve executive session committee minutes for the March 17, 2020 emergency meeting of the Forward School Committee, also National Law Chapter 38, Section 217, 2187, to review and approve executive session committee minutes for the March 20, 30, 2020 special meeting of the Forward School Committee, also National Law Chapter 38, Section 2183, to discuss strategy with respect to collective bargaining relative to all cafeteria employees of the Forward School System, represented by the American Federation of State, County, and Municipal Employees Council 93, Local 1118, as the chair has determined that an open session may have a detrimental impact on the bargaining position of the committee. National Law Chapter 38, Section 2183, to discuss strategy with respect to collective bargaining relative to all maintenance employees of the Forward School System, represented by the American Federation of State, County, and Municipal Employees Council 93, Local 1118, as the chair has determined that an open session may have a detrimental impact on the bargaining position of the committee. Also National Law Chapter 38, Section 2183, to discuss strategy with respect to collective bargaining relative to all custodial employees of the Forward School System, represented by the American Federation of State, County, and Municipal Employees Council 93, Local 1118, as the chair has determined that an open session may have a detrimental impact on the bargaining position of the committee. National Law Chapter 38, Section 2183, to discuss strategy with respect to collective bargaining relative to all safety, security employees of the Forward School System, represented by the American Federation of State, County, and Municipal Employees Council 93, Local 1118, as the chair has determined that an open session may have a detrimental impact on the bargaining position of the committee. Also National Law Chapter 38, Section 2183, to discuss strategy with respect to collective bargaining relative to all civil service clerical employees of the Forward School System, represented by the Forward Department of Civil Service Clerical Employees Association, as the chair has determined that an open session may have a detrimental impact on the bargaining position of the committee. Also National Law Chapter 38, Section 2183, to discuss strategy with respect to collective bargaining relative to all paraprofessional employees of the Forward School System, represented by the Forward Federation of Paraprofessionals, as the chair has determined that an open session may have a detrimental impact on the bargaining position of the committee. National Law Chapter 38, Section 2183, to discuss strategy with respect to collective bargaining relative to all government program employees, including without limitation, paraprofessionals, parent workers, and clerks of the Forward School System that are paid from federal, state grants, and represented by the Forward Public Schools Government Programs, as the chair has determined that an open session may have a detrimental impact on the bargaining position of the committee. National Law Chapter 38, Section 2183, to discuss strategy with respect to collective bargaining relative to all administrators and employees represented by the Forward Administrators Association, as the chair has determined that an open session may have a detrimental impact on the bargaining position of the committee. National Law Chapter 38, Section 2183, to discuss strategy with respect to collective bargaining relative to all, all professional teaching employees of the Forward School System, including coaches, Title I, teachers, nurses, occupational physical therapists, and specialists in the teaching profession, represented by the Forward Educators Association, as the chair has determined that an open session may have a detrimental impact on the bargaining position of the committee, and also National Law Chapter 38, Section 2182, to conduct strategy sessions in preparation for negotiations with non-union personnel and/or to conduct contract negotiations with non-union personnel, including Maria Ponce, Assistant Superintendent, Chief Academic Officer. Mayor, at that time, we would reconvene after the executive session, but it is voted on, and there may or may not be statements at that time.
Motion for executive session, Mr. Chairman.
Second.
Second. Roll call, Deb.
Mr. Agia?
Yes.
Mr. Costa?
Yes.
Mr. Hart?
Yes.
Mr. Hetzel?
Yes.
Mr. Corey?
Yes.
Ms. Lareve?
Yes.
Mayor Coogan?
Yes. Recede. Roll call.
Mr. Agia?
Here.
Mr. Costa?
Here.
Mr. Hart?
Here.
Mr. Hetzel?
Here.
Mr. Corey?
Here.
Here.
Ms. Lareve?
Here.
Mayor Coogan?
Here. Is there any? Is there any motions?
There certainly are, Mr. Chairman.
Go ahead, there, Dr. Hetzel.
A motion to approve the executive session minutes for the March ninth, two thousand and twenty regular meeting of the Forwarder School Committee.
Second.
Roll call, Deb.
Mr. Agia?
Yes.
Mr. Costa?
Yes.
Mr. Hart?
Yes.
Mr. Hetzel?
Yes.
Mr. Corey?
Yes.
Ms. Lareve?
Yes, ma'am.
Mayor Coogan?
Yes.
I'd like to make a motion to approve the executive session minutes for the March seventeenth, two thousand and twenty emergency meeting of the Forwarder School Committee meeting.
Roll call, Deb.
Mr. Agia?
Yes.
Mr. Costa?
Yes.
Mr. Hart?
Yes.
Mr. Hetzel?
Yes.
Mr. Corey?
Yes.
Ms. Lareve?
Yes.
Mayor Coogan?
Yes.
I'd like to make a motion to approve the executive session meeting, minutes for the March thirtieth, two thousand and twenty special meeting of the Forwarder School Committee.
Second.
Roll call, Deb.
Mr. Agia?
Yes.
Mr. Costa?
Yes.
Mr. Hart?
Yes.
Mr. Hetzel?
Yes.
Mr. Corey?
Yes.
Ms. Lareve?
Yes.
Mayor Coogan?
Yes.
I'd like to make a motion to approve the memorandum of agreement as negotiated between the Forward Public Schools and the cafeteria employees of the Forwarder School System, represented by American Federation of State, County, and Municipal Employees, Council ninety-three, Local one-one-one-eight.
Second.
Discussion, Deb.
Mr. Agia?
Yes.
Mr. Costa?
Yes.
Mr. Hart?
Yes.
Mr. Hetzel?
Yes.
Mr. Corey?
Yes.
Ms. Lareve?
Yes.
Mayor Coogan?
Yes.
I'd like to make a motion to approve the memorandum of agreement as negotiated between the Forward Public Schools and the maintenance employees of the Forwarder School System, represented by American Federation of State and County and Municipal Employees, Council ninety-three, Local eleven eighteen.
So moved. Second.
Mr. Agia?
Discussion. Roll call.
Mr. Costa?
Yes.
Mr. Hart?
Yes.
Mr. Hetzel?
Yes.
Mr. Corey?
Yes.
Ms. Lareve?
Yes.
Mayor Coogan?
Yes.
I'd like to make a motion to approve the memorandum of agreement as negotiated between the Forward Public Schools and the custodial employees of the Forwarder School System, represented by American Federation of State, County, and Municipal Employees, Council ninety-three, Local eleven eighteen.
Discussion. Roll call, Deb.
Mr. Agia?
Yes.
Mr. Costa?
Yes.
Mr. Hart?
Yes.
Mr. Hetzel?
Yes.
Mr. Corey?
Yes.
Ms. Lareve?
Yes.
Mayor Coogan?
Yes.
I'd like to make a motion to approve the memorandum of agreement as negotiated between the Forward Public Schools and the safety and security employees of the Forwarder School System, represented by American Federation of State, County, and Municipal Employees, Council ninety-three, Local eleven eighteen.
Second.
Discussion. Roll call, Deb.
Mr. Agia?
Yes.
Mr. Costa?
Yes.
Mr. Hart?
Yes.
Mr. Hetzel?
Yes.
Mr. Corey?
Yes.
Ms. Lareve?
Yes.
Mayor Coogan?
Yes.
I'd like to make a motion to approve the memorandum of agreement as negotiated between Forward Public Schools and the safe, excuse me, and civil service clerical employees of the Forwarder School System, represented by Forward Department of Civil Service Clerical Employees Association.
Check it in.
Discussion. Roll call, Deb.
Mr. Agia?
Yes.
Mr. Costa?
Yes.
Mr. Hart?
Yes.
Mr. Hetzel?
Yes.
Mr. Corey?
Yes.
Ms. Lareve?